I guess we use the microphone, I just like to have this. Um, thank you all for coming out this evening. Hopefully this will be a nice and informative thing and get the network handles a little bit better. Let's do a brief introduction, this course is for Oakley Birmingham. Not a product that was, we've had it grown out of the social movement from seven years ago and we've always been concerned with civic engagement and getting folks more involved in the community even in the board about what's going on in the city and how folks can plug into the cultural, political, and other social aspects of the city. Our purpose in organizing the base for this season were to help citizens be better informed about their candidates and to help them make more informed choices in the election. I'm Joseph Baker, I'm the founder of Oakley Birmingham and my co-moderator, T. Marie, who's been my lifeline in all of this. She's a fellow activist here in town. So I hope everybody voted today for the senate election. Been one of the things we've been stressing is getting folks out to the polls. Of course, we're a week away from the city election, which these nice people are running for. So, we want to encourage you to reach out to your friends and neighbors. Obviously, you care enough about all of this to be out and involved. But, you know, we've got to get more people participating in the process, which is one of the main reasons why we've been engaged in this is to try to help provoke people to get out and talk to their neighbors about this and make an appointment in the court and to get them involved. So, I guess without further ado, we'll jump into this. Ladies, as you introduce yourselves, if you want to take two minutes, Julie will be our timekeeper, she'll flash up when you've got about thirty seconds left and when you're doing this stuff, she'll flash the stop sign at you. If you want to introduce yourself, talk a little bit about why you're running and what you have accomplished if you're elected and in general, whatever you want to say about your campaign. So, if you want to start off, go for it.
Sure, okay. Thank you guys for coming out this evening. It's kind of nasty out, we all have to go and vote, so definitely appreciate you being here. My name is Amber Corrigan, I'm running for Board of Education for District Four. I am originally from New York, but I've lived in the city of Birmingham for about ten years. I lived in Norwood for four years now. Love my community. I have a bachelor's in English and a master's in literary studies and I'll be completing a doctorate in education next May. I'm doing this because I am dedicated to education, this is not something that I'll abandon. As soon as the elections are over, I am an educator. I teach adjunct English that I just gave, so I am definitely motivated by the outcomes I see currently within our school system. This is what's quickly become an economic issue. We are not attracting families to ours great city because of our school system. So we definitely need to affect change at this level in order to bring people back into the city of Birmingham. I am a product of public schools. I was in a single family house. And here I am, twenty-eight, about to achieve a doctorate in education. And I want to show our youth that that's possible. That they can get a doctorate in education or whatever they would like to pursue or do a living wage job working at a home or experience and just obtain skills that we should be providing in our school system. So I am dedicated to this city and to I am proud of it because I want the opportunity to show our children what we can achieve. And I want to be a part of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you, I believe, in Birmingham for giving the time to give us this opportunity to speak publicly about our platform and what we are or are not doing for Birmingham City Schools. I am Daja Hendricks, I am your current school board member for District Four. It is my privilege and my honor to serve our district. I too am very well educated and have worked in education for well over thirty years of my life. My family business is We Here Academy. And so I've worked in early childhood education and been a training educator for well over twenty years of my life. But I am a finance major, my major's a business, and that is one of the reasons that I decided to consider myself and offer myself in this position. But you don't have to be elected to serve. I was serving in Norwood, Alabama, for the fifteen years that I've lived here. I have started programming in Norwood and Kirby Middle School before we closed Kirby Middle School years ago for girls to have something to do during the spring break period. And I did that camp for career charge for over five years of my life, well before I ever served. But I am a parent, and I decided to run and my motivation for running is the fact that I have a son in the school system. Am I proud of everything that Birmingham City Schools has done? No, and that's why I joined this position and that's why I wanted to ask you all for your vote. But I made a promise to my community that I would be better than I found it. And I'm standing here today telling you confidently that I did just that. We have increased the finances for Birmingham City Schools from six months of reserves to one year and eight months of reserves as was reported at our last board meeting on Tuesday. We have increased our school systems in District Four by adding and renovating the Norwood School because there is a need, there is a direct correlation between a livable city and not a development and an educated population. And I get that. So we needed to re-old the Norwood School so that we can attract people like Amber and other people to move back into our neighborhood. So I am very dedicated, passionate, and concerned and involved with our students, and I thank you for your time.
We're going to jump in and I'm going to start with you, Ms. Hendricks.
Okay.
I want to ask you, what needs to be improved with our schools and what is right with our schools?
Good question. I'll start with the improvement piece because it's very near and dear to my heart. Again, I will not tell you that everything is right with Birmingham City Schools because as a parent who's been in the school system for over eight years, I know the challenges we have. And the first challenge that I would admit to is academics. We need to move the academic needle in our schools. But, I'm going to take that a step further. We also need leadership that understands where we are academically. So they can be poised and prepared to move our students to the future. Let me give you an example. Academically, we had some difficulties in science at Inglewood School, which is in our district. This board member decided to create a partnership with the First Water Organization and have our students to be able to do outside of the classroom science activities so that they can enrich their lives that way. What did it do? It had students that are now dreaming to go into environmental services and to do things biologically that they didn't even dream or think were possible. As a result, at Inglewood School, we have increased our academic scores by sixteen percent. In terms of what's right in Birmingham City Schools, we also need to be better cheerleaders of what is going right, and I own that. We have a lot of academic achievements that have happened in District Four that you all don't know about. And I'm here to tell you, we're doing very well in our schools. Not where we need to be, but far better than it was when I joined this board three years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan.
Sure, I think with regard to improvement, Ms. Hendricks, you do need to improve academic outcomes, but that starts with our teachers. We need to make sure that they are trained and qualified and that they have all the certifications and all the tools that they need in order to make sure that our children are receiving a top-notch education. If they do not receive what they need in these school systems now, can you say that we're going to be able to better outcomes academically? How can we say that we're providing everything possible for our children to achieve what we know they can achieve if our teachers are not prepared to teach them? We do not need to consume this ideology of completely disciplining our children. We need to teach them. In order to do that, we need to make sure that our teachers are well-trained and also knowledgeable about what that takes. So also, I think that we need to change deep perception of our schools. There is a lot of negative perception about what the city of Birmingham schools are doing and what they are not capable of. But we are capable of great things, and we are doing great things. So we need to work as a city to change the perception of the outer municipalities, of those people that are teetering above on the edge with issues coming lately and losing our students are not based on the school system. So we need to do a better engagement technique across the city. I do hear that the motivation here is this about being parents. But this is actually a community thing, raising children is based on the community. Being a parent is no qualification for being on the school board then. Yes, I'm guilty, I'm not a parent. But, am I dedicated to education? Am I pursuing a doctorate in education? Have I been an educator for the majority of my adult life? Yes, and it's the entire community in order to bring us our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. We're going to jump off the hot topic of the recent discussion in schools, which is, we want to talk about charter schools. So if you want to share some of your thoughts, if you think that that is appropriate for Birmingham or in general, give your thoughts on charter schools. Start with Ms. Corrigan, go back over to Ms. Hendricks.
Sure, I think we are beyond whether it's appropriate or not. We just have to say that it's already been decided at the state level, so there's nothing we're going back to this point. You know, we can say that we're not supportive, which I am not at this juncture. I think at this point, we should be focusing all resources and all materials and all staff on our public schools to make sure that we have the best. You cannot say that you're offering an option in our community when all of our schools are in the housing, the real option is some students will be able to go to a charter school and others will be left behind. So we really need to be focusing on our public schools. I do not support charter schools, but I do believe that because this is something that has been initiated by the state, that we can see we need to look further about how it can supplement our public schools. Maybe we can offer this as sort of a pilot that we can learn from and say, hey, they're doing this over here, let's try and institute this in our public schools to make sure that we can achieve better outcomes. So while this is something that we cannot stop, they are coming. Okay, I do not support charter schools because I don't believe that it's a true option. But we are faced with that decision and we'll have to make sure that whatever school is improved will be offered as sort of a supplement to our public school education.
I am and have always been an advocate for public education. I believe that as someone who is asking for your vote to support the public institution, that it is important that we are champions for public education. However, it is the state law, and we also have to be poised and cognizant to deal with what that will look like for Birmingham City Schools. But let's be very clear, as we go into this discussion, and this is why your vote is so very important, you need someone who understands the fifty-six page law intimately and understands how that will affect our urban school system to the good or the bad as we vote and make decisions as it relates to charter schools. They are the state law, and we all have to be cognizant of that. However, we do, as the board, currently have authorization to make some determinations over what our needs are. You need to know what the needs are and are not in Birmingham City Schools before you make those decisions. We are growing exponentially in pre-K programs, for example. So there would not be a need for charters in that area because right now, we are doing a very good job of educating our children from a pre-K board perspective. And most of our neighboring communities don't even offer those bundle of services. So when you talk about charter schools, do talk about the bundle of services that we currently offer within Birmingham City Schools. Both career to prepare our children for vocational occupations as well as career academy, which will permit our children for collegiate and beyond. So we are doing that work and we're ready and poised to move forward. But I am an advocate for public education as a member of the education community for over thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. And we're going to start with you on this, and speaking about strengthening our schools right now, how can we strengthen career academies?
Daja? Yes. That's a very good question, and I work right now, Woodlon is the only high school in District Four. I work diligently with Vanessa Minifee Jones, who is the head of the career academies. I'm actively involved and engaged in our schools. So to say what we can be going forward with our career academies, we're doing just that at Woodlon High School. At Woodlon High School, we have prepared two gay scholars, the first time ever in the history of America that Bill Gates had two scholars chosen from the same high school at the same time to educate and push their careers academically forward. But let me tell you what this board member has done recently. School just let out, and we have students that are going to college this year. In the past month and a half, I have taken the time to work with Ms. Minifee Jones and the parents of Woodlon to get two children in college that had missed the deadlines. Because it's not just good enough for us to serve you on the days. We have to be active and engaged in the community and the schools to know what your needs are. So when children can't get into schools or schools say, no, we can't let that child in, this board member takes the extra step and mild and do that. So in terms of our career academies, that's the type of work that we need to do and that's the type of work that I'm doing currently.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan.
I think there are a lot of great things that are happening at Woodlon High School that is undeniable. But we need to do more to strengthen those academies. We can be tracking what's going on currently right now. There is a system that tells us where those students are. Okay, if they are dropping out in their first year in college, if they are pursuing continuously that career path that they chosen or that skill that they weren't able to attain through that career academy. Because what we can track what's the outcomes of those students, that's why we can give more money to make sure that that is a broad program across every single high school in our city. And that's important. That's how we can achieve large impact, large scale impact. Not just one-offs, not just one or two students that are adults, but many new students, hundreds of students that we can say, look, look at these numbers, this is what we're producing, this is what we are, this is what's coming out of our high schools. So definitely trying to keep a tab on what's happening with those children once they achieve that, once they finish career academies. While it is really important to understand what's going on in our public schools, and I think we have a pretty good handle on that, and it is really important to understand what happens after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. All right, we'll start with you for this question. Building off of what we just talked about, what new programs or initiatives should the system add to enhance life for the students and better prepare them for a better life ahead?
I think we can talk about a lot of new programming that should be available, but let's talk about some of the old programming that's no longer there, such as life skills. How many of us learned how to balance a checkbook at home and how to cook something or how to sew something, achieve those real life skills, real practical skills that helped build, that can reshuffle that foundation, that helped us navigate our adult lives? So that's really important to me. And it's been seen back into us as a system curse. My mother told me, she works at a bank, she told me a young man came into the bank to sign paperwork for opening a bank account, and he didn't know how to produce his own signature. That's a problem. Okay, when you don't have a sign and a name, that means we go get that first mortgage on the house, we're not going to know what to do. And that is a real problem. So I think introducing back into the schools, some of those critical elements are really important. One of the things that I think would be new that would be great would be to introduce virtual reality learning. It's all about showing students what they cannot see right in their backyard, but exposing them to international ideas, exposing them to global concepts, teaching them on a global scale. And that includes showing them what they cannot necessarily see in their backyards. They see a lot of white things in their built environment, but if we get exposed to a lot of the things that they see outside of that, they begin to be embarrassed.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. That's it.
The question here, please.
The question was, what new programs or initiatives should the system add for students?
Great question. I'll speak as an incumbent from the programming that I've added into District Four and into our school systems and why. At Inglewood, for example, I'll go back to that. When we talk about perspicacious writing, we have implemented programming into Inglewood to teach our children with poet lyrics, not only how to write, but how to use spoken word and poetry so that they can express themselves with their pens and not with their fist. Okay, that not only affected discipline in the schools, but our writing scores at Inglewood have gone up by sixteen percent over the last year. That is something I'm very proud of. Inglewood, when I joined the board three years ago, was on the failing school list, that four-hundred boat failing school list. None of our children are failures, none of our children cannot succeed. All of our children just need the opportunities and the tools to be successful. And I'm very clear about that. But writing has improved in Inglewood. When you talk about getting our children career-ready and all of those things that we need to do from a financial perspective, that's near and dear to my heart because I'm a finance major. And at Inglewood, I mean at Woodlon, we have a partnership with Regis Bank to teach our children about finance and banking. But I'll take you a step further. We have a program with UAB, a partnership for the ER program, a nineteen million dollar grant that allows children year-round academic opportunities. And they deal just with personal finances. My son went to a money market math camp that would have cost four hundred dollars for absolutely free in Birmingham. We not only did that for the children, but we also extended that grant for the parents so that they too can go back and finish their two-year degrees. Because it's not good enough for us just to teach one-offs, as my opponent said, and referring to our children. But it's more important for us not to be one-offs, but collectively and collaboratively figure out how we raise our children and enhance the community at the same time.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks, and we're going to start with you on this question. How do you propose to better communicate with parents?
Daja? Yes. Oh, I propose to communicate with parents the same way I do now, as a parent. And I take that seriously because as a constituent, I not only vote, but I vote on behalf of the decisions that are made for my child and twenty-four thousand others. So I take that seriously, and I take our parents' vote very seriously as well. But one of the things that I do to increase student involvement and activity is to talk to our parents. We have a current program called GBS, which just deals with student involvement. And it literally goes door-to-door to help extract our parents and grandparents and invite them to involve themselves back in our community. We create community program in District Four so that our parents have year-round services that not only they need, but their children need in terms of health care and dental. Those are the kind of things that this program does to involve and engage the community. But as a parent, it is not good enough for me just to take my child to the nineteen million dollar ER program. I take three and four and five of the children that live in the same neighborhood that we both live in. There are parents in my neighborhood that know that their children can get a decent meal and do their homework at my house. Because it's not good enough for me just to be a board member on the days. I'm your board member and a community member every day of my life. I've been a public servant before I was elected and will be that after. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Ms. Corrigan, second question. Yes, how do you propose to better communicate with parents?
So, I think it is really important to go door-to-door when you have the time and when parents are actually home. But let's face it, a lot of our parents do not have additional jobs when you're not there or you cannot be there in the same time period that you have a board meeting. They cannot show up for a meeting necessarily at five-thirty. So it's less about being in the boardroom and being in the community. So I propose first, community engagement sessions to our parents, to the community, making sure that we engage them where they are at the times at which they are available. Okay, that's great that you have children to educate in your home and where they can get a hobby. Guess what? That happens in mine house too. Okay? It does. So, outside of that, I think that we need to go back to creating newsletters and go back to communicating with folks on a regular basis, not just when there's a crisis and telling them, okay, we're going to have a meeting and telling them, you know, we got here at twenty-five schools and now we only have thirteen, that's not kind of an achievement for our needs. It's more about speaking with them, engaging them in the same environment in which the children are grown up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. We'll start with the next question of you. What changes or improvements should there be in the school budget? What would you like to see?
I think if we are able to achieve some stability in our school budget, we need to reevaluate the top of the initiative salaries that are currently being allocated and refocus that on the people budget that we currently have. Increasing our budget to five hundred dollars per student would be dramatic changes in the classroom. That would be technology, not just for a teacher's or that particular grant, but technology for every single student that they have over and surrounding municipalities. That also needs to be increased, our teacher salaries. Because in order to attract them the best, we need to be able to offer them living wage salaries. In order to make sure that we are engaging our students, we need to make sure that we are attracting well-qualified people who really want to be here. So I think really focusing on slumming down even more so on the administrative salaries, making sure that we are diligent with our dollars, not hiring superintendents for two years to hire for them and then keep on paying them, staying and having them stay on the payroll even after you get another one, is really important because that's money that's not reaching our children. So I will focus on those things.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. Ms. Hendricks?
The budget and finances, as I've stated before, are very near and dear to my heart because every dollar that I spend on behalf of your children, I spend on behalf of mine. Again, as I stated before, when I joined this role, we were taken over by state takeover because of finances. We had six months in reserve. That means our forty-four schools, if three groups came in, we wouldn't have the money to pay our payroll. So when we talk about increasing teacher salary, we need to be cognizant of what the budget is doing right now so that we can speak intelligently to where we need to go in the future. We can talk and wax eloquent about hiring teachers, but the truth is, at our last board meeting, for the first time in Birmingham City School history, there are only eight open teacher positions when schools started day one. That's never happened before. We went from six months of reserve funds to one year and eight months of reserve funds during my leadership because that is important. I think that my counterparts should look at the budget because truthfully, we are so low on being executive, we were so low on executive staff compared to where we were three or four years ago, that it's amazing. There are at least about half a million dollars of executive staff that aren't there now that were there before. Because I am fiercely responsible and I do look at the bottom line. And I do want the money to go to the classroom. But you also have to know where the funding comes from. The majority of our funding comes from state funding. So when we talk about one-on-one technology, which I'm working on doing now, and we just approved for every sixth grader, we want to increase and have one-to-one technology for every student because every student needs technology to be able to succeed. But you can't do it off the state funds alone. You have to know where the funding comes from to know how you're going to get there. We have grants that we're going to write to be able to bridge that gap from a financial perspective. And I know the budget and I can speak to it.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. And Ms. Hendricks, we're going to start with you on this question. What changes should the legislature and state board make to better support the system here in Birmingham?
That's a great question. As I said to you all, it's not good enough for us just to educate children as we have done in the past. We want to provide year-round academic opportunities for our children. And unfortunately, the state may not have enough money to fund those types of needs and resources. So we have to be bold and have the vision to go out and write, bridge the gap. One of the things that I would love for the state to do is to help fund pre-K four. Again, Birmingham City Schools is one of the few neighboring communities that even offers pre-K four schools. But if we want to really educate our children outward and prepare them as soon as we can, we need to get them in the classroom as soon as possible. We are bleeding at the seams, as much as we have retention issues in Birmingham, we have a need and have quadrupled the amount of pre-K four classes in this city. So I would love, because what we do know is that a hundred percent of that is being funded by the Birmingham City Schools. Board members like I invested that money so that we can educate our children. So I would love for the state of Alabama to help fund pre-K four so that we can maximize that need for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Ms. Corrigan?
Sure, I think that there is a lot of things that need to happen legislatively on the state level as I think we can all agree with regards to the city of Birmingham. There have been a lot of fights in the past, but that also has to do with a lot of relationships. And it's all about relationship building with the legislature. I think particularly this with, you know, I'm in agreement with Ms. Hendricks, we definitely need to talk about how we are currently funding our school systems and how much the state is actually allocating for city of Birmingham's school system. Pre-K is important, but the entire school system is hemorrhaging and nationally, there's a lot of states that give a lot more to urban schools especially because there is a national trend to where families are moving back into cities and so they need to be better supported, and that's true of that. So challenging the state to provide additional funding in order to bring in technology in order to achieve those raises that I spoke about earlier, that is really important to me and something that I would work on.
All right, building off of those questions, we're going to continue in that general vein. Going to talk about the relationship between the school board and the city government. So, we'll start with Ms. Corrigan. What will you do to build a better relationship with and get additional funds from the mayor and the council?
Being that I currently am a public servant for the city of Birmingham, those relationships already exist. This is not something that anybody would have to worry about and something that people should really consider when they're voting. Because those relationships exist. It's easy for me to pick up the phone and say, hey, let's really have a really good conversation about this and let's be in agreement with something that's clearly proposed on either side. Because let's face it, education will be, like I stated earlier, a major issue for the city's growth. And so this is something that I don't think will take a lot of convincing, but we do have to be able to have conversations that don't exist on have to be able to have conversations that don't exist arguments and fighting matches. We need to have people who are gonna be logical. We need to have people who are willing to have those conversations. And we need to have people who don't necessarily have that kind of history and who do have a history of relationship with the city government. I am, you know, I've already spoken with some folks over there who have great ideas that perhaps the board does not necessarily listen to at this juncture because there were, you know, this historical battle or whatever. So we need to make sure that we are staying focused and oriented toward the children and less on personal issues and historical issues that we see. And I think because, you know, if we bring in someone new who already has those relationships, who already understands the budget for the city and the schools, you're already going to have somebody who's built in to make some of the changes that we need to see on the funding side from the city.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney. Ms. Hendricks?
Relationships are extremely important. I had those before I served on the board and I continue to have them now. I just spoke with our city councillor on my way here and I'm speaking with neighbors all the time throughout the city. I have had a relationship with every neighborhood president for the past twenty years in my neighborhood. I have a relationship with the state superintendent. I have a relationship with every teacher and principal. I have a relationship with everyone that works at city hall, everyone that works in Montgomery. And I've known these people and have worked with them collaboratively even before I served. Again, you don't have to serve to be a public servant. You don't have to be elected to do that. And I was doing that work before I was ever elected in this city. I've lived in Norwood for over fifteen years and I have dedicated myself and my life to public service before I ever served in this particular position. I promised the community I would leave it better than I found it. And I've done that and I will continue to do that. But relationships are extremely important and I have a relationship with everyone from the state house all the way down to my city and in my school classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. And we're gonna start with you, Ms. Hendricks, on this next question. What will you do to help build a stronger board?
Good question. There must be collaboration on the board as well. And I am a collaborative leader. I have worked with each and every member of the board. I have worked with each and every superintendent that's been here. And the decisions to change leadership were not made by just this board member. They were made by all of the board, as with every decision that happens in Birmingham City Schools, whether we agree or not. We must move forward. And I work very diligently to show our children and model the behavior that we should adopt and show our children the type of leadership and mentorship that we can believe in. I work very hard in and outside of the classrooms. Again, there's not a neighborhood that I have not been in and there's not a school that doesn't know my name. You can check all of the records at all of the schools because we have to sign in as volunteers. So you can check the record and see which of these opponents of mine actually work and are invested and engaged and involved in pushing academic needles and actually working to make a better future for our children. I've been doing it for over fifteen years. I'm gonna keep doing it. And again, I do it for my child and I'm doing it for every other child at Birmingham City Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Ms. Courtney, second question. What will you do to build a stronger board?
Well, I think in order to build a stronger board, that starts with the leadership that you select. It's all about making sure that we aren't repeating some of the things that we see in the past. Let's face it, the outcomes speak for themselves. Okay? We're not saying that everything that was done was bad. We're not saying that. But if people are saying that they want change, they want to see the city move forward, they want to make sure that our children have everything that they need in order to be successful, you have to choose different folks to do that. That's leadership. That's leadership in your community, taking control of the people you select in order to see different outcomes. That's what that is. And collaboration is important. And collaboration doesn't lead to two different superintendents within the same boardsman. That's not collaboration. That's not leadership. That's not vision. That's not creating a successful path for our children. So we need to be cognizant of that when we choose who you're gonna vote for. My opponent, the incumbent, has provided a great service to our city. But again, the outcomes speak for themselves. The folks that are running against me have had, both had the opportunity to serve. And look where we are. Again, we have had one-offs. They have done great things in the schools that they oversee. That is great. But we need to think bigger, broader for every single child across the city. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that who we select has capacity and has willingness and who has the relationship built into the city, not just with the city council member of these issues, but with every single city councillor. Okay, I've written four-hundred-thousand-dollar grants to help clean up North Birmingham, which lends to providing a better quality of life for our children so they don't have to walk past blight every day, so they can focus on their studies. That's leadership. And no, you don't have to be a public servant in order to serve, but guess what I've been doing in my entire life as well?
Thank you, Ms. Courtney. And now we're gonna open up questions from the audience. So if anybody has a question in the audience? Yes, sir.
My question is to both candidates. I'm a United States military veteran. And when I look at people in the city, they all, they all want something. Under each administration that the school board has had, we've had people come and go under these administrations. And our children continue to be blighted about not understanding who they are. We had a young man get shot, an eight-year-old baby get shot today on First Avenue. And I asked, Ms. Hendricks, I backed Dr. Contral, and it's noted that these people have tried to make things better for our children. My question is to both candidates, what part does family in an uneducated environment play on our children's non-behave of the violence that they're going through in schools, the bullying, the harassment? What can you do and what have you done under your administration in District Four? What have you done to make sure that you know that a person could vote for you and say, hey, Dodge, I'm voting for you, or Ms. Courtney, I'm voting for you because of what you've done? Give me three things, Ms. Hendricks, that you know you've done that provided a great
In terms of economic development and developing our neighborhoods, reopening Norwood School and the fight that I did to reopen that school in both of our neighborhoods is one of my shining accomplishments. Because it wasn't easy. We had to find the money. We had to make that happen. Okay? But it was important and imperative to that neighborhood. At Inglewood and at Hudson Schools, I create programming. I, there's nothing I don't ask for our children. So I create programming to show our children opportunities and examples they never would have been able to see if they hadn't had that opportunity. But two days ago, I was at a South of Lions rally in Kingston and this young man was singing for the Lord. And when he got through, I said, sir, where did you finish high school? And he said, ma'am, I'm embarrassed to tell you I didn't. A lot of people don't know that we have credit recovery in Birmingham City Schools, that there are online programs to be able to allow children that have missed that opportunity to be educated, to go back and recover that education. So you gotta have leadership that knows that that's what's on the table and is willing to bridge those gaps to make it happen for our students. Writing a four-hundred-million-dollar grant that's a part of your job description is great, kinda like one-offs. But I'm not a one-off type of candidate. And I think that you have to move further, work harder, and involve yourself now to be effective in the future. Children can't be what they can't see. And leadership can't lead you if they're not involved in the classrooms, knowing day to day what the struggles are for our children, where we are now, so they can actually prepare them for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Ms. Courtney?
Sure. First of all, I am a military brat. I was born and raised in a military family, so I understand a lot of the, I bring a unique perspective of what we need to show our children. So I want to say that I can offer that and bring it back to our community. But I think being a leader in our community is understanding what's going on in our educational system, but also understanding what affects children and families around them that needs them to be, you know, have disciplinary issues in the schools. What's going on with them mentally? What are they having to pass by every single day so that they can get to that school? If they have to pass by blight every single day, which I have written a thirty-five million dollar grant to eliminate, which is not necessarily part of my job description, but something I thought I should do because it was important to my particular community, that's really important. Because when you have to pass by blight every single day, that whole folks that are maybe in there shooting crap or doing things that are beginning violence, when you have to walk past that and see that every day, how can we ask them to concentrate and be the best they can be in our schools? So as important as it is to understand our educational system, which I do because I am an educator, it's also important to understand what it takes to build up our families and community by removing blight on their way to school, by making sure that they're getting breakfast, lunches, dinner every single day, by making sure we're offering after-school program for every single school across the city, not just in our district. It's important to understand all of those things outlined that contribute to why we're not achieving what we can achieve academically in our schools. And I can offer that. I have the perspective of a public servant and an educator. Okay? And maybe I'm not a parent, but guess what? I'm a sister. I am a cousin. And it takes those people to help raise children as well. It's not just up to parents. It's up to all of us and you.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney. Do we have any other questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
We lost, we voted to deny the charter schools that recently came up and then the state overruled as I'm aware. So now the state's the authorizer of that charter schools, I understand it. Do you think there's a need to consider conversion charters so that the, so that our school board can maintain some level of control over schools that are in our community? Or will we just continue and just work on startup charters?
Ms. Courtney, we'll start with you.
Sure. As I earlier articulated, this is not something that we can necessarily fight because unfortunately we didn't fight hard enough in the beginning and so now charter schools are here. So if there's any level of control that we can maintain in our school system with regard to charter schools, we need to exercise that. And so if that means being an actively engaged member of the board in some of the charter school programming and making sure that we're diligent about making sure that some of the tools that they're providing to those students that are in attendance in those schools can help in some way supplement some of the programming that public schools have, we're all about doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney. Ms. Hendricks?
The charter school that was overturned is currently still in litigation, so there have not been any decisions made as it pertains to that. But charter schools are in law and the state of Montgomery is currently trying to work to change legislation and the verbiage in it, which will then decrease the availability and abilities of authorizers to continue in that vein. But you gotta have somebody who's already involved and engaged in that charter school legislation to know what's happening and know what we need to do to go forward. Conversion schools are gonna be a decision that the new board is gonna have to deal with again because this legislation could change right now while we're sitting here. So we don't know what that's gonna be when it grows up. And we have to be poised and prepared to be ready to answer those questions on the call at that time. However, the reasons that that charter school was denied was not one or two. There were nine reasons that were outlined by the state of Alabama that they did not meet from a criteria perspective. So it was not personal. It's all business. And if the state of Alabama creates a law, this board member, as any board member should, will adhere to that law to the letter of it.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Do we have any last questions before we wrap up this portion? All right, so we're gonna move to closing statements. We'll start with you, Ms. Hendricks. Two minutes, and actually I give you a little bit, we go three minutes on this one.
Oh, wow. I'm almost a Baptist.
Your second closing. So just my last appeal to everyone who are there should vote for you to remain in office.
Okay. And again, I not only want to thank you all, I believe in Birmingham, for this opportunity to be heard, but I also want to thank everyone that came out today to hear what we had to say on behalf of our children. I'm Dodge Hendricks and I am a passionate, compassionate, and collaborative leader of this school system and one of your board members. I have worked diligently to improve academically. I have worked diligently to increase our finances. I have worked diligently to reduce some of the overhead that we had from a high-level executive administrative standpoint. And I've worked very diligently to include extracurricular activities in our classrooms to show children opportunities that weren't there before I served. I did that before I served in the classroom, not just throughout the community. I did that too. But I did that in the classroom voluntarily, engaging myself with our teachers and our administrators to know what's really going on with our children. You've got to really, really know District Four and know the children that are in District Four to serve them. Children can't be what they can't see. And every opportunity that I can avail to my children, I do. Everything that I can do for each and every community within this district, I do. And I do work in other districts as well, not just District Four. There are principals all over the city that know that you call on me because I do your work. I am asking for reelection because it is important. We have too many changes that are going on from a national perspective, from a statewide perspective, and from a local perspective, to have someone that is not engaged, active, and involved right now currently in our school systems and knows what we can do to move the academic and move our school system forward. We need to be cheerleaders for Birmingham. We don't need to call our children failures or harp on the fact that we have not made the academic strides past the thirteen failed schools. If you knew what it took us to get to the thirteen failed schools, you'd probably be cheering them on as well. But it's hard work and it takes hard work and dedication. It takes someone who understands and is involved with everyone that moves the needle academically throughout the city. On August twenty-second, please vote Dodge Hendricks, District Four, and thank you for
Want to let them finish quiet? I'll just go. It's okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay. Well, I want to thank you as well for coming out today. We have an artist's task, voting and getting out to vote, so please do the same thing next week. My name is Amber Horey and I am running for the board's education for District Four because I am a passionate educator. I am a passionate community member. And you don't have to have lived here for your entire life to love our neighborhood of Norwood. You don't need to have lived in the city of Birmingham to want to give everything to our children that they deserve. Okay? It's all about wanting to be here and to be sacrificial enough to say, I'm here to make a change. And look, I can't stress this enough, the outcomes speak for themselves. And while it may seem a little harsh to say that thirteen failing schools is better than what we have, but guess what? One failing school in our community is too many. And that's not something that we should be proud of. That's not something that we should tout as an achievement. Okay? I'll have a doctorate in education. That means while I am financially able to understand what's going on because I do work at the city and write grants, but I also understand what it takes to educate children because I am a lifelong educator. I'm not just someone who's going to abandon our children if I do not get elected. I am pretty well even to this after having written a great dissertation. So this is not something I'm going to abandon. I want to make sure that we understand that there was a mention of changes, too many changes in our state. There's been too many changes in superintendents. There's been too many changes in how we decide, you know, who's going to lead our children next. We need to make sure we elect somebody who's going to support our superintendent. We need to make sure that we're gonna elect somebody who understands the role of a board member, which is not necessarily to rule and to sit here and make all these agreements about what we can and cannot do, but really understands that it's to support the superintendent. Please vote for me on August twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney. We're gonna get reset up for our council side, so our council candidates will make their way to the front. We'll take a couple minutes to get them in place and then we'll start up with them.
Thanks.